Meeting of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors, regular meeting to order. Good afternoon, Mr. Powell.
Good afternoon.
If you would please call the roll.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Here.
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Ms. Sadler.
Here.
Mr. McGlynn.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here. I will try to live up to Mr. Hippel's chairmanship at the last meeting. I heard it was earth shattering.
I agree.
Viewership like we've never seen. We have no presentations today?
That's correct.
Any public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right. We have nothing on our consent calendar and no public hearings. That brings us to board considerations, fiscal year 2023-2024 budget discussion. Mr. Powell.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I made a presentation on the proposed fiscal year 23 budget at your meeting two weeks ago. I don't have any further presentations this afternoon, but happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions regarding JCSA budget? Mr. Powell?
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, are there any board requests and directives?
Yes, ma'am. If I may, I just wanted to draw attention to a situation where one of my neighbors right across the street from me experienced a break in her water line about three weeks ago. She had water coming out of her water line and I tried to help her, called on a Saturday evening to get some assistance from JCSA. And very quickly, Stephen Burcham came out to check on things. His last weekend on the assigned assignment list before he took his promotion to engineering. And he quickly was able to identify the fact that the leak was on the owner's side of the meter, so he was not able to complete that task. But I just wanted to extend my appreciation for that. We then realized that the homeowner had a policy with, through Dominion Energy, for utility protection. And I would just give a cautionary note that it was 12 days later that that water leak was finally addressed properly. In the process, we managed to see her cable lines cut and needing to be replaced. Ms. Utility mismarking the location of the utility lines, which caused the cut to the cable system. And a plumbing company that apparently had a very difficult time finding the ability to provide a crew, which consisted of one person, to come out and finally complete the job for that homeowner. So I would just indicate that with Dominion Energy, they have a lot of things on their plate, but this is one program that they have been offering to folks. And for people who've been paying into that program for years, they really need to deliver a better service than what this particular homeowner had. It was very frustrating to have to watch that water flowing into the culvert day after day, despite repeated efforts to get the situation addressed. But I wanted to extend my appreciation to JCSA for the great job that started this whole process off. He looked at the situation, assessed it, indicated to the homeowner that as long as their water pressure seems okay, that probably it would be fine. But the moment she started to see the pressure drop, to call a plumber. Anyway, that's just a...
Well, and a piece of that, too, is while we are waiting for whoever to get that fixed, we often go back and make an adjustment one time, X amount of years. I had this, thanks to Mr. Hippel getting me connected with someone else, I got mine fixed a lot more quickly than that. But we will adjust someone's bill, right?
That's correct, Ms. Larson. We do have a leak adjustment policy. Once, we will not adjust the bill until we can verify the repair has been made and the leak has been fixed. But we do have, I believe, a very generous leak adjustment policy for customers who do go through this process. You know, and I will add, I think I've said this before, but one of the things that surprised me when I first took this job is just how many leak adjustments we do every year. We do leak adjustments for about 10% of our customers on a yearly basis. They can be toilet, you know, a lot of times it's a toilet leak. It's not, it's not always a water line break. But, but we do a significant number of adjustment, adjustments for our customers every year.
So the longer it takes to get fixed, the less amount of revenue that we get
That's right.
to put into other areas of where we need to make repairs, et cetera. So, thank you. Anything else? General manager's update?
I don't have any, don't have any update.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to adjourn until 5:00 PM on May 10th, 2022, for a regular meeting where I believe we'll be adopting the budget if there are no further questions about it?
That's correct.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll call this business meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Stevens, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Sadler?
Here.
Mr. McGlynn?
Here.
We have a very important agenda today. We're going to start off with some presentations. We have a proclamation for May 1st to 7th, 2022, as Public Service Recognition Week in James City County. And Mr. Stevens, I think you're going to handle that item.
Yes, sir. I do want to recognize and, back to my notes, that celebrated annually during the first week of May since 1985, Public Service Recognition Week is the time to set aside and honor our employees of the federal, state, and local governments and members of the uniformed services. Whereas the citizens of James City County are served every day by public servants who provide a range of diverse services with integrity and efficiency. And whereas county employees as public service have worked hard to help James City County overcome the challenges from the COVID-19 pandemic by allowing essential services to continue and have played a critical role in protecting the public health and safety. And whereas county employees serve the public in community development, general services, social services, economic development, human resources, fire, police, parks and recreation, financial and management services, information resource management, county administration, and more. And whereas James City County recognizes generous contributions of time and talent by public employees and community volunteers and the importance of the services they render. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. And now therefore be it resolved that Mr. McGlynn, a chairman of the Board of Supervisors of James City County, does hereby proclaim May 1st through the 7th, 2022, as Public Service Recognition Week in James City County, and encourage the community to honor and recognize the accomplishments and contributions of the men and women who power our local government. And I would just like to add to that, one, I appreciate your willingness to do that. But I would tell you, we have excited employees throughout our county organizations who enjoy the work they do in the service, serving this community. And I appreciate your willingness to recognize them for that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And, and what I'd like to do, if we may, is have the board come forward. We have a lot of our public servants with us today. And perhaps if we could just have a photograph with the board and the members of that group. We'll then have a presentation to Ms. Vinroot, representing Social Services, for our next resolution. So I thought I'd go on and do that, and then we can go ahead and just take care of photographs while we're dealing with this. So we have a proclamation of May 1st to 7th, a busy week, as Resilience Week in James City County. So resilience and public servants alike. And this resolution indicates that whereas celebrating, celebrated annually during the first week of May since 1985, Public Service Recognition Week is a time, I'm sorry, the wrong one, wrong one. This is the right one, okay. Whereas, community members are vital to our locality's successful, success, prosperity, and quality of life. And their experiences and relationships are vital to forming strong, fundamental, healthy development. And whereas, families need safe, stable, nurturing communities and positive connections with caring individuals to foster healthy development. And whereas, adverse childhood experiences, ACEs, are definitely, are defined as potentially traumatic events that occur in childhood, such as experiencing violence, abuse, or neglect, which have a tremendous impact across the lifespan of the individual. Whereas building resilience to buffer against potentially ACEs is a community responsibility that affects the current and future quality of life in the community. And whereas investing in programs, strategies, and policies that support children and adults can help to ensure that communities develop resilience. And whereas James City County recognizes and acknowledges the work of the Greater Williamsburg Trauma Informed Community Network in encouraging all individuals, families, groups, and organizations to work together in efforts to promote and foster resilience, therefore, thereby ensuring positive childhood experiences and strengthening our community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors of James City County, do hereby proclaim May 1st to 7th, 2022, as Resilience Week in James City County. And I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens and witness whereof. Okay, so if we can just come forward and first have a photograph with Ms. Vinroot and then including Mr. Stevens.
Do you have comments?
Yes, I would like to invite Latara Ralph and Tony Dahman, who are members of our network, to be in this particular first photo.
It's been a while. Not an expensive one.
Let's do, let's do one from... No, no, it's fine. It's just the podium is in the one photo.
All right, Latara, I could, you need to be in that one, too. Like this angle.
Or any public servant? Well, thank you for indulging us in that opportunity to visually recognize the importance of this week coming up. Okay. So our two proclamations are completed, and now we can move on to the third presentation. That's VDOT's Pipeline, Project Pipeline. And I'll invite Mr. Chad Tucker, Program Manager with Virginia Office of Intermodal Planning and Investment. Mr. Carroll.
Hello.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Again, my name's Chad Tucker. For the last six to seven years, I've run the Commonwealth Transportation Board's Smart Scale Program. And about a year ago, was tasked by the CTB to stand up this Project Pipeline Study Program. And so today, what I want to do is give you all a little bit of background on that program, and also talk about the study that, one of the, one of the pipeline studies that we did along Route 199. So, let's see here. Couple of the program purpose and goals is, as you may be aware, the Commonwealth Transportation Board, every four years, through their VTранs, multimodal plan establishes priorities and needs in VTранs. And the purpose of the Project Pipeline was really meant to provide technical assistance and resources to local governments and regional agencies to help them understand some of the challenges and develop some solutions to those. So we're looking to streamline the project planning and improve project readiness for projects that do compete for Smart Scale and other funding programs at the state and regional level. And we've been able to make pretty good use of data, robust data sources, and create dashboards that help us more quickly diagnose what's causing the problems. And I've got some, some examples that I can share here with the group. So really, it's about solving problems. And the Route 199 corridor was one that the previous CTB member, Mr. Malbin, was one of his priorities for the Hampton Roads region, given that most of the 199 corridor functions as limited access roadway. There's still some remaining signals that tend to be choke points and areas where a lot of safety issues occur. So that was a high priority for him and for the new board member coming in that's taking his place. So, just to give you a little bit of background on really what we're trying to do is foster and promote what we call a performance-based planning process, which is really guided by these sort of three principles here, which, one is, if it's not broke, don't fix it. So that's the reason that the Project Pipeline focuses on identified needs through the VTранs process. If it is, if you can prevent the breakage from occurring, if you can make better use of your existing resource, and you can make it operate more efficiently with what you have, you know, that should be one of your, one of your goals from a project development standpoint. Then if it is, you determine it is broke, and you can't preserve or prevent the breakage from occurring, or the degradation in performance, can you fix what you have? Can you make what is there more efficient? And then the last would be building more. So we're really trying to bring this perform, this very deliberate performance-based planning process to solving transportation problems in Virginia and provide these resources to the local and regional governments. So to just kind of illustrate this, it really would be going from an approach, and to use this analogy, if you were to leave this meeting and you get in your car and your check engine light comes on, would you immediately say, I need a new engine, or I need to go buy a new car? Sometimes that's what can happen in transportation. It's, we need to add new lanes, we need to expand the capacity, or we need to build a new facility on a new location. But instead, what we're trying to do is if we know there's a problem, if there's that check engine light for safety or congestion or reliability is flashing, is let's understand what's causing that problem. Let's understand what the factors are that are contributing to it, so that we can develop and test targeted solutions that will allow us to solve more problems with the limited funding that we have as a state. And so that's really what we're trying to foster through the Project Pipeline Program and provide these consultant resources to localities to help them more quickly understand what's causing the problems and give them some solutions to test. We're doing a three-phased approach to these studies. The first phase being, let's diagnose what's causing the issues. Phase two, which is, we're towards the end of now, is developing and testing alternatives and soliciting public feedback on those alternatives, which we just recently completed the survey about three weeks ago for this study and got some feedback from the public. And then the idea is it would go into a phase three, which would be where we've worked with the locality to select a preferred alternative and identifying investment strategy. And the phase three would be that final refinement, and it would be developing a good cost estimate that you could use to go after regional funding or go after smart scale funding. For this particular study, we determined that the best course of action that we would recommend to the, both the city and the county, is an extension of phase two and doing some more targeted outreach and engagement with the surrounding community in and around. Because this, and you will see here in a second, we got a lot of feedback from the community and a lot of concerns with some of the alternatives that were being considered. And so we feel like the best course of action is to continue and have more in-person meetings with the surrounding community so we can understand their concerns, and we can start to adjust the recommendations based on that feedback. So a quick overview of the study is really looking on Route 199 from John Tyler Highway to the Brookwood Drive intersection with Jamestown Road there in the center. And it really focuses on those three intersections. The things driving the VTранs needs in this area are multi-pronged. Improving bicycle access, particularly to Colonial Williamsburg from the Jamestown area and from the Capitol to Capitol Trail. Capacity preservation, preserving the existing capacity that exists along this corridor. Congestion mitigation, reducing the congestion that occurs there, both in the AM morning peak as well as the PM peak. Improving pedestrian access across Route 199. And then safety improvement. The two most critical or highest priorities being that capacity preservation and how can we improve safety along this corridor? Because over the last five years, there have been about 113 injury crashes that have occurred at these three intersections in the, in the last five years. So, as I mentioned, one of the things we do is, there's a lot of data that the state and localities have access to now. And this Enrix data source is one of the things that helps us understand, you know, where, where does congestion, when is it occurring? Is it AM? Is it PM? Is it afternoon? And one of the interesting things about Route 199, as you can see there in the morning from this graph, your speeds start up, you know, over 40 miles an hour, and they essentially steadily decline throughout the entire day until about 5:00, 5:30, and then you start to see that rebound. So there's never a point after the AM peak where the speeds really recover. And so that's one of the, the things that we wanted to look at, is how can we make both eastbound and westbound in the morning and evening more efficient? How can we get more throughput and reduce some of that delay that's occurring there? From a safety standpoint, a number of rear-end crashes, this I think is indicative of the congestion that occurs there. You've got significant queues that come back from the existing signals, so much so that folks aren't expecting to have that queue that far back from the signal. And so when, when that occurs, you typically will see a spike and an increase in the number of rear-end crashes that occur. There's also angle crashes that are occurring at several of these intersections, based on the turning movements and all. So if you look on the right side of the screen here, there were two crashes involving bicycles and one pedestrian fatality up there at John Tyler Lane and John Tyler Highway. About almost 60% of the crashes there are occurring during rainy conditions. And there are some specific countermeasures we can recommend to try to target and address those. Right turn on red also was an issue. That often can be as a result of traffic on the side streets getting impatient, and they take more risk of making those right turn on reds with the high-speed traffic that's coming down 199. So that was an issue both at John Tyler Highway as well as Jamestown Road. And then we also, down at Brookwood, had two crashes due to red light running there. So these were some of the congestion.
Ask you a question?
Yes?
What exactly is an angle?
So an angle crash would be...
Okay, okay.
Yeah, like a T-bone, often referred to as a T-bone accident.
Okay, thank you.
The Kimley Horn team here, Olivia and Danielle, their team did quite a bit of field review over the summer and in the fall. And here's just some of the things that they, that they witnessed there. So Brookwood Drive there, on the left-hand side, pretty significant westbound queuing Jamestown Road, and that extending for quite a distance, almost to the creek, the bridge that goes over the creek. At, on Route 199, you can see the queuing there that occurs in the, both the AM and PM peaks. And then it was noted quite a bit of pedestrian and bicycle traffic along this corridor there at Jamestown Road and also at John Tyler Highway. Here's some additional field pictures with the left-bound queues extending past the storage lanes. So you've essentially got turn lanes that are queuing back and blocking the through lanes. Multiple cyclists observed during, during the, the field review. And so, you know, a number of challenges out here. This graphic here shows the current day level of service and delay, as well as what's predicted in the year 2045. So it's anticipated that as, you know, the area continues to grow, that you're going to see the continued sort of degradation of service and increase in delay along the corridor. One of the reasons we were excited about this study is I know in the past, building interchanges has been proposed. the past, building interchanges has been proposed at these signals. And there's been quite a bit of public pushback from the surrounding community based on the impacts that that would have to the community. And so a lot of the recommendations that we came up with were really, how can we make the existing signals more efficient? How can we make them safer and push more traffic through? Because as you can see here, the blue line in the eastbound direction there, that's the queue that backs up from Jamestown Road essentially through Brookwood Drive and almost all the way to the bridge. And then the orange represents where we think the queue is going to be in 20 years. It's going to essentially extend all the way to almost to the Colonial Parkway, a mile and a half back from, from Brookwood. So, you know, this is a combination of both a congestion issue as well as a safety issue, but also how can we improve the connection between Jamestown and Colonial Williamsburg and the various trails that exist and making sure that people can walk and bike across the corridor, which there is definitely demand for. The MetroQuest survey, so one of the things that we utilize nowadays is MetroQuest is an online survey program that allows us to target specific zip codes using social media. So Instagram, Facebook, and we can essentially target the surrounding communities on their Facebook feed and get an ad that pops up that the, that the state pays for to get input from them on studies. And we found it to be very successful and very much appreciated by the, the communities and folks that are busy, that have, you know, soccer and have to pick up their kids up. Now they can provide input, you know, in, in the evening when things quiet down, they can take the survey and provide us feedback. And this one by far got the most, of the 45 studies that we're doing across the Commonwealth, this one by far got the most responses. I think we've typically been around six or 700. We got almost 3,000 surveys filled out for this particular. And, you know, folks were really concerned about some of the relocation of some of the turns, some of the turn restrictions that were being proposed. And so that's one reason why we feel like an extension of that second phase and doing some more targeted public engagement is really the best course of action for this study moving forward. As I mentioned, we need to have that additional engagement, reaffirm that our understanding of the problems that the public experiences at these intersections is correct. And then adjust and refine improvement concepts. So we really feel that's the best course of action. Come back to this board as well as the city council in Williamsburg in probably four or five months with that, having done that community engagement and with any recommended adjustments to the, to the recommendations from that point forward. So that's essentially concludes, I'd be willing to answer any questions that the board has about the study or about the approach we took.
Sure, I've got a few. So I live on Brook, just in the area that is accessed by Brookwood Road and along with a few thousand other county residents. We know that that access is the only one that we have out of our residential area for the airport, for Williamsburg Landing Retirement Community and for the Williamsburg Winery, which is a, a significant tourist attraction as well as Laurel Lane Elementary School. And I can tell you that I have heard public comment on, on few issues that approached the magnitude of what I heard on this particular item. So I'd be curious to know what, what the responses that you received on that survey were, but also to ask, as I read through the, the online material, it indicated that there would be a public meeting. I'm not aware of any public meeting that occurred on this issue.
There was not a public meeting. Now.
Right.
If you rewind about a year ago, when, when we were standing up the project pipeline, our intention was to have a public meeting in phase one to sort of, after we've diagnosed what's causing the issues, let's have a touch point with the public and make sure the people that drive the quarter every day agree with our, our sort of observations and what the data's telling us. Because sometimes the data can't tell you 100% what's going on. And this is a decision I 100% own. We were in the middle of the pandemic and the decision was, do we do a public engagement, period? Or do we hold off until phase two when we've not only understand the issues, but we have some things for the public to react to from a recommendation standpoint? I think for 44 other studies, that's worked. But in this particular example, I think that earlier public engagement would have been very, very beneficial to us because it would have helped us understand what the community's concerns were with the performance, but also where some red lines may be as far as some of the recommendations that we proposed. Now that being said, I, based on the feedback that we got, I do believe there were some misunderstandings about what was being proposed, particularly at Brookwood. There were essentially two options that involve what's called a through cut where you essentially prohibit the through movement from the side street. But people from Brookwoods could still make a left onto 199 and they could still make a right onto 199. And then from 199, you could still make a left. So it really would be going to the other side of 199 that would be prohibited. There was a variation that involved restricting lefts from 199. And I think that's what folks thought we were proposing. We actually were leaning more towards the more traditional through cut, which would have only prohibited the through movement across because the counts that we got showed that that was a very little demand for that movement. Whereas the right and left turn movement was, was very, as you pointed out, this is the main access point that those communities have. So I think this, and it's really tough to put that nuance in an online survey. And so I think that's where an in-person meeting where we can actually show renderings and 3D simulations of what's being proposed. I think one will help the public's understanding of what was being proposed, but might also help them understand the benefits. But also give them what they need to recommend, perhaps modifications to those recommendations as well.
There were also proposals to restrict left turn lanes at Jamestown Road, weren't there?
There, so at Jamestown Road, what was being proposed there was what's called a bowtie intersection. And essentially what you would do is rather than restrict left, you're more relocating how the lefts occur. So traffic, I'll tell you what.
Would turn right.
Back up here.
Go down about a quarter mile and then turn back toward Jamestown Road and then wait for the traffic light to allow you to cut across. Is that right?
Yeah. So here's Jamestown Road intersection. Essentially what was being proposed is you would just to the north and just to the south, you would build a roundabout on Jamestown Road. And so traffic that's currently coming up Jamestown Road from the south that would make a left would go through the intersection, would turn around, make a U-turn at the roundabout and then would have a free flow right onto Route 1. The benefit there is one, it greatly reduces the conflict points at the intersection and you would see a marked decrease in the number of crashes that would occur there. The second thing is allows the signal to go to what's called a two-phase signal operation. And the time that folks would normally be waiting on that side street to make that left turn, they essentially would get the through movement, would be able to go around the roundabout and then make the immediate right. And so all in all, it was pretty significant travel time savings at that particular intersection, doing that. But again, there were, the surrounding communities there had some concerns with the perception of you're essentially forcing a lot of that left turning traffic to go through the intersection twice, which does seem counterintuitive. But it is a very effective at-grade intersection option or that has been used in other states that we've seen significant congestion and safety benefits. So again, it's, you're still able to make a left, you just make a left in a different manner on.
You make a right and then a left.
Yeah, go straight through and then U-turn. Yeah.
Right, yeah. I mean, I, I traveled that road probably, I, I make two or three round trips a day through, through this general area. And the first thing I have to say is that, you know, in terms of the current level of congestion, there is about a half an hour in which the traffic is pretty heavy, but it usually means that you wait for two, two rounds of the light to, to get through there. And in the afternoon, similarly, maybe it's, it's an hour in, in the afternoon, which there's a little bit of slowdown. My, as I looked at some of these numbers, I was seeing that you were going to get a 40-second improvement on the through flow traffic, but presumably on those who are affected by their redirection to the bowtie or whatever, the increased time to reach their destinations would be pretty significant.
Yeah. So the, the 40-second travel time savings was the average per vehicle for all the users, all the entering vehicles, including the side street traffic. So that's what, if you average it across, you're getting about 40 seconds of delay reduction per vehicle. I believe there was somewhere in the order of in the peak hour, 5,000 to 6,000 vehicles entering the intersection. So each one of those vehicles would experience, based on the simulation, about a 40, 40-second reduction. And obviously that's going to differ depending on approach. So for 199, that number might be greater for the side street. But when you average it all out, that was the travel time savings per, on average.
One of the, one of the advantages, burdens of, of having served on this board for a fair period of time. When I first began my service on this board, I was involved in the, the issue of dealing with problems at the Jamestown Road intersection. And also was involved in the decisions to widen 199 along the way. And there was a pretty clear understanding that, that the section of 199 from John Tyler Highway down to the eastern portion of 199 would continue to be signalized and, and would in fact recognize the fact that these were already well-developed areas that had come to rely on 199 as part of their neighborhood transportation system. The, the, the concept that, that there should not be any signals on 199 seems to have been invented? Can I say from, by, by someone who maybe was not aware of those determinations?
All the alternatives that were considered would retain the signals on 199.
Right.
What we were trying to avoid is I know, and you have to go back quite some time, there has been discussion of building interchanges at these, in, in the past, because these essentially are the signals along an otherwise limited access facility that's operating very much like an interstate. So these, these sort of become the choke points because, you know, a signal can't handle as much traffic as an interchange. But there are things you can do to a signal to make them operate more efficiently. So all the options that were presented to the public in the MetroQuest survey, retain at-grade access and retain the signals. It essentially was attempting to reduce signal phasing and reduce some of the conflict points so that you could push traffic through in a more efficient way through the signals that exist. And a lot of that involves relocating how turn movements. Because if you think about it, a typical signal, your lefts are going to occur and then your throes for that movement. And then your lefts for your side street and then your throes. And anytime you can reduce any one of those phases, it's more time that you can give to the other phases. And so that really was, going into the study, that was the original goal, was how do we reduce impacts to the surrounding communities, but do it in a way that improves performance? And that really was our objective and goal. But it became very clear from the survey that we, we need to do more engagement directly with the surrounding homeowners associations and communities to understand some of the concerns they had with some.
And I understand the, the objective. I, I do wonder about some of the sort of underlying expectations or principles. And, and one of those principles appeared to be, we want to move traffic through that highly congested area, and I don't just mean congested in terms of traffic, but activity at, at a higher rate of speed. And I'm not sure that, that that is something that you would find much appetite for, because it is a place where you do see pedestrians and bicyclists, you know, bicycle access to, on 199 is presumably not a preferred alternative. It doesn't, I, I don't think we, we see that much on, on 199 or, or similar kinds of roads. But for folks in a number of areas, there are other ways that are sort of adjacent to, to the road that allow them to get to Jamestown Road intersection, for instance. And there where you are seeing people walk across from one commercial establishment to another, being able to do that without having to worry about cars moving at too fast a, a rate of speed is probably more beneficial than the fact that you want to increase transit, which I think is a great thing to be able to do and encourage more people to use transit, means that there will presumably be more tendency for some stoppage to, to occur there as well. But, so I would say, you know, prioritizing speed through an area is probably not something that's going to get much resonance with, with.
Yeah. And, and to be clear, sir, that, that was not one, that, one of our measures of effectiveness was not to increase the speed. We certainly wanted to decrease delay. And the amount of wait time that people have, particularly on the side street. So it's not just about moving traffic on 199, but Jamestown Road, John Tyler Highway, Brookwood Drive, each as a side street have quite a bit of delay that occurs as people try to access 199. And so what we were trying to do is reduce the overall delay and allow the existing capacity to operate more efficiently into the distant future than what we're sort of predicting if we do nothing. Because the concern is that if we do nothing between now and 2045, you're going to see a marked decrease in, you know, the amount of delay that's occurring with these intersections as a whole, both for the side streets as well as 199. But to go back to some of the previous needs from V-Trans, these were really what we're driving. We wanted to improve that bicycle access, particularly across 199. So how can we enhance people's ability to get across 199 and to get between Jamestown and Colonial Williamsburg? Pedestrian access was another thing we were looking at. How can we improve that? Make it safer for people to cross? That capacity preservation is really, how do we preserve the capacity that's already there without expanding the footprint of the roadway? So speed, you're going to have in some instances, an increase in the average speed, but increasing, just making cars go through there faster was not our main goal. It was really to make the existing intersections more efficient and safer.
I, I would just ask about the, the, the survey itself. I, I heard a lot of complaints from people about the notion that they didn't have the opportunity to indicate that they didn't find any of the proposals to be desirable.
Yes. I think one of the lessons learned would be in future surveys to make sure we include a no-build option, which is, you know, if the public prefers doing nothing over the options that are presented. I think it kind of became clear based on the ratings that we were seeing, that folks were clearly favoring the no-build option based on the options as they understood them. So, and that's one of the reasons why we felt like we couldn't conclude around phase two of this study with a recommendation to James City County and the city. But instead, we needed to understand the, the surrounding community's concerns more and have the op, the ability to be able to adjust the recommendations accordingly.
And I, I would say that, that the board over the years has, I think, recognized that the capacity of Jamestown Road itself is an issue that we are, need to keep in, in mind when we are considering proposals for development. The corridor itself is pretty well built out. There are relatively limited opportunities for additional residential development. But frankly, the roadway as a whole really is not going to support much additional traffic. And I don't think there's any inclination to expand the footprint of Jamestown Road itself down to the ferry. In any case, I, I thank you for, for making the presentation and especially for recognizing that the options that were being presented here really did generate a great deal of concern among residents of, of the community. Again, I, I think the fact that you got as many responses as you did and that they, I assume were overwhelmingly negative, should be a very clear signal that there may be some things that can be done to make improvement. that can be done to make improvement and certainly want to do those things. But that this is not necessarily an area of 199 that needs to be thought about in the same way that other aspects of the road with limited access from other roads would entail.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. I do worry about Jamestown Road. There is not a lot of road, room for more residential, but it's a commercial corridor. We have people that come over on the ferry for employment. I also travel, this is the area I travel daily, and it is quite congested. I worry all the time about pedestrians at Jamestown Road and 199. I think part of the reason, I think because you didn't have a public meeting, there's a lot of, you end up with people that don't understand. I mean, they, Jason was nice enough during a meeting to bring in the options and, because it's hard when you're looking at something this large to figure out what it is and what the impact is going to have on you. And so we were able to pull that up here one morning when we were here for a different meeting. And so I think, you know, if you'd been able to do a public meeting and people had understood, because also I think data is so important. And, you know, you showed considerable data and that we are going to have an issue, so we have to decide some sort of fix so that we can start working on some improvements some way. So I do hope that you all will, you know, go backwards and figure out how to do that and then take that feedback and come back with, whether it's the same or different solutions. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I wonder if I could just ask if you could tell us what response you got at the Williamsburg City Council?
Very similar, the number of folks, I would say about 10 or 15 folks from the community there that showed up. And I think they were appreciative of the willingness to sort of call an audible and do some more targeted engagement because, as Ms. Larson pointed out, there's a lot of nuance with what was being recommended. And I think having that opportunity to sit down with the public in a in-person meeting and kind of answer their questions and, you know, walk them through how each of the alternatives was intended to operate. And I think that dialogue would have been extremely helpful. One, for us as planners and traffic engineers, to understand, you know, was our analysis, is that what people are experiencing on a daily basis? But also would give the public a more thorough understanding of what we were recommending and what we anticipated some of the benefits. So I think that in-person engagement that we do with the homeowners associations and the surrounding communities here over the next several months will be extremely helpful in allowing us to make adjustments that might be needed to improve community buy-in to the ultimate solution.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Tucker. Appreciate you coming today.
Thank you.
All right, we now move on to the consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar. The first is a contract award for $833,480 for the replacement of fire pumper. Grant award of $109,400 for the Virginia Outdoor Foundation for Grove Community Park. Is that two items?
It would be two items. I think that's a leftover.
I don't have the second one on my...
All I have is the fire pumper, minutes adoption.
It's just the fire pumper. I apologize for that. Just the fire pumper.
So the fire pumper plus adoption of minutes for several of our recent meetings. Do I have a motion to?
Motion for approval.
The other one's out.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Motion for approval. Consent calendar, Mr. Stevens should call her all, please.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinn?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. So now we have board discussion, Hampton Roads Alliance update, and welcome Mr. Doug Smith.
And Mr. Chair members of the board, as Mr. Smith is coming forward, I would like to just remind you, a couple of years ago, well, as I arrived here, a little more than three and a half years ago, we were talking about joining the alliance. They were reforming. I don't think Mr. Smith was part of the alliance at that point, but at least he was around in the area. And we chose not to as a region, between York County and City of Williamsburg and James City, not to join. And we formed, kept the Greater Williamsburg partnership, and we moved it to the chamber, hired an executive director who I think served us well until she COVID sort of decided to accelerate her retirement, and she retired last summer. And so it gave us an opportunity to relook. And I will tell you, participating in all the Hampton Roads regional meetings, at some point, Mr. Smith showed up and kept talking to us about what the alliance was doing. And us three on the sides sort of felt like, well, it sounds like they are different. And I think the concerns were in years past, we didn't maybe get our fair shake or feel like we were getting our money's worth. It was mostly public, our public money. The changes going on that they had promised really seemed to be coming to fruition. And so when our executive director of GWP left last summer, it seemed to be an opportunity to reach, to reconsider the alliance. And we had talked with you last fall, reached out to Mr. Smith, and they were agreeable to allow us. And we have rejoined the alliance as of last December, and it is incorporated into my budget. So my hope is that, following the presentation, you'll be inclined to allow us to remain because I think it is serving us well at this point. And just want to thank Mr. Smith for working with us and for his time here today. So with that, I'll give it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. And Chairman McGlinn, Vice Chair Sadler, and members of the board, certainly a pleasure to be with you. I've served on a variety of regional boards across the table from several of you. And I think you and I were on the PDC back when I was on the Portsmouth City Councils. It's a pleasure to see everybody. I'm also here with Steve Harrison, who's our vice president of business intelligence and marketing. He's going to do a couple of slides for you, and I think y'all have a little history, too, if you remember or not.
I think that's true.
And part of why I want...
Yes, it's a very good thing. It's a very good thing.
That's right. So he tells me it is. And part of why I have Steve here also is, so I was in Virginia Beach as a deputy city manager many years ago, and frankly, recommended to the city council in those days, Jim Spor and I recommended that the beach get out of the alliance. And it was about the same time that you all did because we felt like the organization has lost its way a little bit. And fast forward, it is a very different organization. And one of the things that I think we've learned over those years, and frankly, over the last two years, is communication is really, really important, right? And making sure folks know what you're doing and what your priorities are. And so one of the things we've done is, we have a handful of vice presidents. And so I have a vice president that's assigned to every community. Steve is assigned to yours, and they will be at your EDA meetings, they will be, we need to be here. And our mantra is, we just don't like surprises. You don't like surprises, we don't like surprises. So we feel like that connectivity and that connection is really important. So I want you to get to know Steve a little bit. So again, obviously, we're here to talk about, and it's really, Scott and I talked a little bit, it's not so much that you all are coming back as it is you're joining a new organization. And so we really want you to get a sense of what that organization is, but it really does complete the region. Then the reality is economic development takes place on regional boundaries, right? Without regard to jurisdictional boundaries. Companies don't care where their customers live, they don't care their employees work back and forth from different communities, and nobody understands that better than y'all. This thing is awful touchy. All right. I just want you to know what we're up to, sort of what we, because we're, again, it's a little bit different for those of you that we're around. So the mission is really about growing traded sector jobs in the region. And for a long time, we followed an old model. And the model in a lot of the country had changed. We had been focused for many, many years on simply business attraction, going out of market and trying to bring companies back into the market. The reality is, pick a number, 75, 85% of your growth really comes from existing business. It's growing the businesses that are here. So it's really important that we get involved as an organization in helping those high-wage, high-skill, high-growth companies grow here in Hampton Roads. And so we'll talk a little bit about that. Obviously, the vision is, really, that we play that role of convener, of catalyst. I like to say, we don't close a deal. You know, we try to bring opportunities to communities, but ultimately, it's Chris Johnson and his team that are going to, that are going to close a deal and make sure that it happens. So we try to be really careful about how we take credit for things or don't take credit for things. And so one of the conversations you'll hear me talk about in a minute is, we think lead generation is really a critical piece of what we do, how you fill that funnel. And I'll tell you about sort of what we're doing there and how that has changed. And then the powers, the values on the right are just what you would expect them to be. We want, we try to empower our team, we try to make sure that it's a collaborative process. We have what's called the Regional Economic Development Team, the RED team. Frankly, we asked, James City County, York, and Williamsburg have served on that team for the last several years. The thought was, listen, you've got a different organization. VOM was doing a great job, but we're all selling Hampton Roads, so y'all come to these monthly meetings and know kind of what we're up to. So it's made the transition, I think, a whole lot easier. This next slide is what I would call kind of the money slide. And I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this, and this is what is really different. It's a very different team. We've got a number of new players. Obviously, I'm new in the role. We'll talk about that a little bit. Steve is new, I say new, in the last couple of years. We've really turned over almost the entire organization. Again, this idea of a new model, if you look at economic development, yes, it's business attraction, yes, it's business retention and expansion, it's also entrepreneurship, it's also a lot about talent, it's a lot about product. If you don't have product, then it doesn't matter. You know, invariably, somebody lands a big chip manufacturer or a big manufacturing facility, my phone will start ringing, hey, did we go after this project or did we, why didn't we get this? And one of the answers is, often, we don't have, we don't have mega sites, we don't have the big sites for these products. So we'll talk a lot about what we're doing around product development as well. So a new model, new governance, we were a 70-member board, right? It is tough to get much done with a 70-member board. And so we've taken that down to 13, and it is six mayors. So the five biggest investors are always on the board, and then a rotating member happens to be Dick Greis from Olive White County right now, who's representing the rest of the communities. And then six C-suite executives. The other big change is economic development in Hampton Roads was really, A, it was ceded to the public sector, and that's hard when you've got 14, 15 localities. And B, it was, the folks that volunteered did it because it was their civic duty, right? It was, and this is not a criticism, it was bankers, it was lawyers who did their term. What we really want is people engaged in economic development out of their self-interest. They're at the table because if they're successful, if we're successful, their companies are going to be successful. And so if you look at the volunteer chairs, it's Bill Armattenger, the head of HR, just retired literally this month from Huntington Ingalls. It's Keith Vander Vanit from Ferguson, one of the top folks at Ferguson. It's Buffy Barefoot, the Virginia Beach president for Town Bank. Mark Dreyfus with ECPI, J.D. Myers with Cox, Kathy Vick from the Port. And then Diane Leopold is the chief operating officer for Dominion Energy. So when Bob Blue became the CEO of Dominion Energy, she became the chief operating officer. So it's a really strong board. Howard Kern from Centerra is the past chair. One of the questions I'd have, as I'm going to talk to you all in Williamsburg and York, is we want somebody from up here, from these communities on that board. So we would welcome some conversation about that and some recommendations about that as we go forward. That brings me to the funding. Again, when I say we were sort of ceded economic development to the public sector, we were 75% public money, right? And so now we've got about half a million dollars from the private sector. We now get about $1.7 million from the private sector. We actually get more private money than public money, so we think that's really important. So one of the things we want to talk to you all about is who are the businesses up here that we should be engaged with and should be investing in the alliance and supporting what we do. We have eight companies that give us $100,000 a year, so they're invested in a significant way. And then we changed from a 501(c)(6) to a 501(c)(3) to give them some tax advantages for those contributions. We'll continue to evolve. Some of the feedback we've gotten, really this spring, as we've come out of COVID, we haven't done an adequate job communicating directly to elected officials. And so, and I think that really came home during COVID. And so as we were talking to folks and say, hey, you know, we're engaged with mayors, we're engaged with city and county managers, we're engaged with the economic development directors, but that information wasn't getting back to the elected officials. So I hope each of you realize, if you got an email from me, call it week before last, basically saying that, saying, hey, here's all the things we've done around communicating, but you're going to start getting direct communication from me, you're going to get it, rather than trying to send it through Scott or sort of send it through your chair, you're going to get newsletters, you're going to get annual reports, you're going to get invitations to our events. And so you can choose how engaged you want to be, but we'd love you to be frankly very engaged. Oops. All right. So we're really guided by two documents, and I think this was brilliant the folks before me did. One is a master agreement between the localities and the alliance. And that is a document that was passed by each of the city councils and county commissions that talks about what we're going to do, what our responsibilities are going to do, and how the funding would flow back, and sort of what the localities were going to do. And so candidly, players change, right? When you look at the south side of Hampton Roads right now, every city manager is new within the last two and a half years. Most of them came during COVID. So all of a sudden, you're like, you're starting all over, and they're asking me questions. Wait a minute, we got a master agreement. Let's refer to the master agreement in terms of what we've, we're agreeing to do. And then we brought in, my predecessor was a guy named Rick Weddle, who was really, really sharp in that was truly an economic development professional, more than I. My background is really consult, I was with Chris Kaufman and Knoos Consulting, was an economic development director years ago, was then the city manager. And so Rick was a true economic developer, and he brought in IBM and their site consulting group to come in and really study the region and understand what our strengths and weaknesses were and how we should be functioning. And that has really, implementing those recommendations has really driven our work these last four years. And the four headline items there were, you've got to be, you, the alliance, have got to be at the center of the wheel for regional collaboration. None of this stuff works if you're not working together as a region. We've got to do a more targeted, and Steve will touch on this a little bit, more targeted approach to our industries and how we attract those industries and do a much deeper dive. We have to be real experts on unmanned systems, on cyber, whatever the topic is, that we're trying not to have just a cursory knowledge. One of the challenges I think we have as a region, we talk about, what should we be called? Are we Hampton Roads? Are we Greater Williamsburg? Are we Coastal Virginia? We'll never know if Hampton Roads was a good name or not because we didn't spend 50 cents trying to make it stick, right? And we still don't. So one of the challenges I think we've got to really think through is, how do we promote this region? That's one of our tasks, but we spend about a quarter of a million dollars a year on it. That's not adequate, so conversation for a different day. But then, I would tell you, and Steve's going to touch on this, market intelligence and what we bring in terms of some of the models we have and some of the analysis that we can do for you is worth it for the communities to come in and join. And I'll touch on, as I said, Steve will touch on that. So what do we do? Obviously, we market the area, we really try to facilitate the decision-making processes people look to come in and either land here or grow here. We try to help the existing businesses, I touched on the research, and really that engagement of the region's leaders. We work really closely with all of the chambers, with Reinvent Hampton Roads, with the work, I tell you, we're spending a lot of time right now with the workforce council, given the importance of talent. So we'll talk about business development. This is really what y'all think of us as, this is our core activity. We've hit the ground running, Chris. I know it's going on a couple of trips with us in May and June, I think, and so we've really been pleased to start that process. Our sectors, and Steve will go into these in a little bit of detail in a minute, other than offshore wind, these were the sectors that IBM identified. Offshore wind is a real generational opportunity for this region. So we have really gone aggressively into that space, and we think there's an opportunity to grow, to really create the supply chain hub for that industry here in Hampton Roads and bring in 5,000 or 6,000 jobs in the process. And Steve will touch on that in just a minute. This is really interesting because this is, it's, when we got here, we had three different firms doing lead generation, and they were kind of all over the place, and there wasn't a lot of rhyme or reason as to what they were doing or where they were going. And so frankly, as those contracts came up, we got rid of all of them. We made the change to the group doing our international work first. Frankly, a year later, we gave them the domestic work as well, so you'll see why, you'll see more activity up there on the international buckets. But they do the really significant outreach. Obviously, that first outreach is an email, a contact, a social media outreach. So we're literally doing tens of thousands of those, but then it's really about, how do you get a meeting? And then how do you turn that meeting into somebody coming here and kicking the tires? And we're really starting to see more activity there. And this just gives you a sense of when this stuff turns into a project. And the sort of, the piece I want to draw your attention to is this piece right down here. We rely on the Virginia Economic Development Partnership to also bring leads. So folks, when they start these processes, they're really looking at states. What state am I interested in? Traditionally, the majority of our leads were coming from VEDP. We want to be generating our own. And so this year, we really flipped that to where two-thirds of our leads were generating. They're bringing us the same number, but we're seeing a lot more activity. Now, down here in this bottom right corner, a lot of that is around offshore wind. It is a hot, we are standing up a new 80 to $100 billion industry off of the East Coast. And it's going to, it doesn't exist in this country, it's going to land somewhere on the East Coast. We want a lot of that to land here because when it does, it's gone. It is going to be a sticky industry. It is going to be a sticky industry. And this is just to give you a sense of some of the kinds of things we worked on. CMA CGM is a classic business retention. They were going to leave Norfolk, they were going to leave the state. When I say "we," "we" was the city of Norfolk, it was the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, the port stepped up in a big way. But to tell you that economic development is regional, two-thirds of the employees in that Norfolk-based business live in Virginia Beach, right? So it really is, if they leave, it is a real hit for the entire community. I think this may be the most interesting, there's two, well, SVT Robotics, I hope you all realize, started in your accelerator. And this is an amazing story of what these guys are turning into. He's now, the challenge we've got with him is finding him talent. He's got 50 jobs that average $115,000 he can't fill, right? So we're really trying, one of the questions we'll have is, should we, the alliance, get involved in talent attraction? We haven't, and I don't mean workforce development, I mean talent attraction. And so that's a conversation that Sean Avery and I are having. The other interesting one is Breeze Airways. This is really, this connectivity, the airport, it's a challenge for us, right? And so the ability to, Breeze came in, really focusing on the tourism industry. To their credit, the airport authority pulled us in, and what we did is brought the state in and went after this as a hub. So yes, they service us, but this is an employment base for them with 116 employees, and now they've got direct flights to nine, to communities that just announced direct flights to Los Angeles. There's, I think there will be another West Coast one here, so this is a great project. We didn't do this project, this was the Port Authority, but the Siemens Gamas is the first big domino to fall in offshore wind. This will be the blade finishing facility at Portsmouth Marine Terminal, which is a real, which really is the first domino to fall in that industry. So again, offshore wind, we've opened up, we try to do some creative things. I talk a lot about offshore wind because we think what we've done here can apply to other industries. We've opened up an offshore wind landing, which is basically a coworking space for these kinds of companies. We've got 20 companies, international companies that are members of that space. We've had everybody from the Secretary of Energy to the Secretary of Labor that have come in and had conversations. This is where, if you're going to have a conversation about offshore wind, it tends to happen in our landing. And then, again, business retention, and I will tell you, we have, this has been a little bit of a roller coaster for us in that candidly, the localities have been a little reluctant for us to get in this space historically. And so we've had to be really careful about how we get in and how we make sure we're adding value. And the smartest thing we did is we hired a young lady named Toy Hunter, who used to work for the Virginia Economic Development Partnership. She is beloved in the region, and she's doing a dynamite job, but you can see of sort of who we're calling on. It's folks that are headquartered companies, maybe companies that have headquarters in Europe, and we're over in Europe, and we call on them while they've got offices here. But we do that, we don't, we never go on a call that the locality isn't either with us or set up the meeting, or we're there to support them. So back to that idea of communication. Just again, these regional initiatives, the invitation you got from me was this new director, the president and CEO of the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, Jason Elkubey. We had an event with him last Thursday where I interviewed him and listened to him and sort of his vision. Those, I really would encourage you to come to these investor events because you see your peers and you see some of your companies. I want Steve to jump up here and run you through these next two or three slides because I think this is really, I don't know that folks realize what we offer here. But again, Steve Harrison is the vice president for marketing and business intelligence.
Thank you so much. Afternoon, Professor McLennan. Good to see you again. So our history is that I took two classes with Professor McLennan at William &amp; Mary. So I-
And he did a summer internship, I think, with the Virginia Beach Department of Economic Development.
I did, but my first internship was actually with James City County Planning Division under Jason Purse. So it's an honor to be back and a thrill to see all of you again and to be working in this community again. It was really what kind of ignited my passion for local government, was working under Jason at James City County. So it's great to have you guys in the fold. As Doug said, I'm the vice president of business intelligence and communications. And so the business intelligence side is really the research side of the house. So we pull all of the information about what makes Hampton Roads a great place to do business. And traditionally, what economic development organizations have done is sent that to prospects, and it's kind of hidden behind the walls that will only send it to you if you're asking those questions, if you're looking at the region. But what we're trying to do is turn it sort of inward-facing, if you will, and make it available to our localities because we feel that we have about $50,000 of subscriptions to economic impact workforce demographic software, and we should subscribe to that so that you don't have to. So our business intelligence offers services to your economic development team and to anybody in your county government as sort of part of your investment. And so the data is primarily used for our target industries, but not exclusively. So for instance, retail is not something that we traditionally look at, but we get a lot of requests from the local governments for information about retail. And so just for fun, that we have a business analyst online through Esri, which can tell you pretty interesting information. So James City County residents, it believes are 9% more likely to say that buying American is important to them than the average American, and 18% more likely to have purchased a hardcover book in the last 12 months than the average American. So it's one of those things where we have that information that if you know that people can collect it, it's a little bit scary, but it's good to know so that you can kind of position your city and your community to hit the people that are most likely to do business here in James City County. We also have a lot of information on real estate, not only sites and buildings, but looking at some analysis and potential tenant expirations and things like that that we can share with Chris and his team to say, you know, X number of companies have leases expiring in the next 12 months, so you may want to check in with those businesses and just make sure that they're going to stay here in the county and renew or expand. And so in 2021, we did that 176 times for the communities that we served, and have already done it a few times with Chris and his team. And it really makes us better to learn the questions that they're getting and kind of compare notes. And then as Doug said, on the other side, marketing this region is, I think, particularly important because people don't know the Hampton Roads brand. We've had a lot of discussions with site selection consultants and people that said that Hampton Roads does not have a negative brand perception. It really does not have a brand perception at all. And so in a way, that's a clean slate for us, and so we can kind of target people in our target industries in a very strategic way. And so our current campaign is called Every Business Needs an Ally. We said that we have an ad agency that's based at a Norfolk called Sway, and often it takes a subject matter expert to tell you something obvious, which is that the word ally is in alliance. And so every business needs an ally, and we can kind of tailor that to any individual industry. So on your screen is for healthcare back office operations, and we can switch these out. It goes specifically to C-suite executives in the Northeast that have, in this case, a healthcare back office operation that we would deem as potentially able to expand into this market. And then on the other side, we work with a lot of magazines. Traditionally, we had been doing sort of print ads, but instead, we're doing now digital advertisement and then working with groups like Site Selection Magazine to do some pieces that we can utilize too. So the Hampton Roads Intelligence Report, which you can find on our website, it's a 20-page, 24-page editorial that one of their editors actually looked at the region and then took a list of 15 subject matter experts from us, interviewed them, and then wrote the story. And one of those experts is Catherine Rowe from William &amp; Mary. And so I think that it's a really nice reflection of the business community. We plan to continue to do that, to let sort of outsiders talk to the people about why this is such a good place to do business, and then share that with the world. And with that, I will turn it back over to Doug, but we're really excited to work with you all and happy to answer any questions.
Yes, carry on. Yeah, so happy to answer questions or love comments and thoughts.
Great. Well, first of all, let me thank you for coming up today and expressing, I think, a very passionate view of business development in Hampton Roads generally, and very delighted that Steve's going to be handling our area. It's terrific to have you back here for whatever time you come up to visit. But it certainly gives a sense of forward movement and activity, and it's clear that you've got both a deep understanding of the issues and a real commitment to follow through on them. So thank you for that. Board members, have any questions or comments?
I don't have any, I don't think I have any specific questions. I guess I worry a little bit. I think we just struggle with economic development. You know, where do we go? I did our authority, I served on it for, I think, a year or two, and I appreciate the passion that, but I, you know, I think it's tough. It's tough for Chris, and we've got a lot here that we've been trying to develop, and we've had, definitely had some wins. And we've got some newly approved area that we've done that is going to be an industrial park. So, you know, that's an exciting time for us as well. But, you know, there's often the misconception, I think, about what we can and cannot do with a business. I think the, and I get it because before I was here, I didn't always understand either. I can't force a business to go somewhere necessarily. I do worry a little bit when I look at your board and I see no one from our area, you know, that red flags me a tad. And I also worry about Hampton Roads because I know, I don't think the average person, I think they think Hampton. They're not thinking James City County when they see Hampton Roads. They don't understand. But I don't know what the, that's not a criticism because I don't know what the right, I don't think Tidewater is going to cut it either. I don't know how you describe this area, and I don't know that you want to spend millions of dollars trying to figure it out. So, but I do appreciate the presentation and the direction that you're trying to go in and the excitement about, you know, having the three of us back in. And, you know, hopefully, you'll be able to work with our team and we'll be able to have some successes. And I appreciate you coming down here. I appreciate you, you know, sending us that information about some things that we might be able to come participate in as well. So, thank you.
By the way, I'm going to give, the site selection piece, I've got six or eight copies I'll give Chris for you all. I'd love for you to take a look at that because it really does start to sort of tell the story of who Hampton Roads is. So I'd love to get some feedback. And that's really somebody from the outside looking at us and thinking through what they see and with the opportunities. So, but again, please call on us if there's ever a time where you feel like you don't know what's happening or you don't like what's happening. Let me stand up in front of all of y'all and fix it.
Yes. I'm guessing because we haven't, we haven't joined back as of yet, that that's why we don't have a position on the board. Is that correct?
So, yeah, so the board was voted in in November. So you all can, so that's what I said right at the very beginning, we want to get somebody from this month. Don't want to add 12 people, you know, because we don't want to go back-
I don't know how anything got done with the 70-member board. That's so scary.
12 is a push, but-
That's what I, I'd love for y'all to think through who that could or should be, and if you can pass that through the chair or through Scott.
Well, again, thank you for being here. I'm sensing a real shift in encouraging light of economic development Chris is doing. As Ruth pointed out, it's challenging. He's doing an amazing job, and I think with what you all are bringing, it's fresh, it's new. I agree Hampton Roads, I've never liked it because all I think of is Hampton. Well, that's not us, I agree. All of us who are old timers, you know, I always still call it Tidewater or Peninsula or whatever, but I agree, a good term, I think, would be beneficial, but it would take all of us old timers a while to get used to that too. But, but thank you for what you're doing, and I appreciate the cooperation and coordination with everyone trying to come together to create a fresh new look on what economic development looks like and will be in the area. And I definitely think it's a good idea to keep, as Ruth mentioned, or Ms. Larson, sorry, mentioned, we do have a, you know, with the new commerce area, industrial area up in the further end of the county, my stomping grounds, I think it's going to provide us with some great opportunities, and I'm looking forward to how we can piece all of this together to really not only keep us on the map, but really put us on the map for what economic development looks like. So thank you for your presentation. It's very encouraging. Thank you.
You, I would agree with the Hampton Roads. I wish we could come out with a name that would encompass all of us, you know, from, you think Hampton Roads, you don't even think of Virginia Beach, really. You think of just basically what's around Hampton, and you wouldn't think way up here, you know, would be anything connected to Hampton Roads. I understand the theory and the thought, and that's what I think is a region, but it would be nice if somebody could come up with something that incorporated the beach and the rivers and streams we have up here and all the, you know, connectivity that we have. Have you all ever looked at taking each community separately and go, okay, James City County economically would fit this, Virginia Beach would fit this, Norfolk may fit this, and kind of give each community, we see you as a community of this, and these would be more targeted things that would fit not only with your size, but your age, you're protecting the environment. What we're doing here differently than some of the other communities are, you know, building out and building every piece of land they could build on, we're trying to protect stuff. So, you know, there may be a plus in there that we can look and kind of zero in and target our different people that come in to want to invest in James City County and grow their business because of the environment that we have that maybe, I won't say another city, but may not have the trees that we have, put it that way.
Yes, absolutely. We have, and that's something that we are providing to each local economic development office. So one sort of caveat to that is that during the Greater Williamsburg partnership's iteration, they worked with Chomura Economics and Analytics to do a target industry study for these three communities. And we were on the listening panel for that and involved in it, and it essentially came to the same conclusions that the IBM study that we used came to. And so what we did is we've incorporated all of the information from that on what the Greater Williamsburg area should be targeting into our strategic plan as well. So all that information was gathered. But then we also have a variety of databases that kind of can look at specifically location quotients and things, so the likelihood of a particular industry or occupation to locate in individual cities. And what we're doing right now is actually kind of creating a backend of our website where we'll give that information specifically to the local government so they can log in and see that the James City County is X percent more likely to attract a X business than the average American city. And so you can also then sort of look at Hampton Roads and see sort of trends and where certain things can be located. And we've done that traditionally for a few of the other communities. We've done some presentations on target industry analysis, particularly for Isle of Wight. They've asked for that a couple of times. But, so that's something that we're going to turn over to each community because you're absolutely right. We have the target industries that kind of fit the broad brush, but there are certain sort of areas of expertise that James City County has that a Isle of Wight or a Virginia Beach might not. So that's something that we've got access to, and we're working with Chris and his team to make sure that they do too.
I know we're always looking for commercial to, you know, for a tax base to take care of our residential citizens, but, you know, at the same time, sometimes the wrong commercial facility can ruin the residential side and the environmental side and the healthiness of a community where it may benefit a community that's already moving in that direction. And that's what I worry about most is in James City County, we're so unique, I think, compared to all the other communities. I'm a little prejudiced, I think this is the best community out there, and I'll tell that on TV.
You just did. We could call it James City Road.
That's what I was thinking. I had that in mind, didn't want to push it though. I want to ease into it. But, you know, and another thing, the, some of the larger corporations that come in and land and everybody's so excited, and you have to put so much money into it and all this, but the tax revenue is good on that side and all that. Sometimes they'll land in an area, and after they've landed there, everybody looks at it and goes, well, Northern Virginia got that, you know, there's nothing for us there. But sometimes there's components off of that that, you know, I don't know if y'all do that, but go back to the company and say, yeah, you've landed Northern Virginia, but there's little spots that you want to be near Northern Virginia but not connected to that your business could work in these areas in Hampton Roads, if I want to use that for now.
That's a great thought. I don't know that we've done that. One of the things that we are, my understanding is we did years ago that we stopped doing that we're going to start is looking at the ones we didn't get, that we missed, and why did we miss it? And so I mentioned that red team. One of the things we, I think, and some of this was just COVID and Zoom, and you can all do so much over Zoom. One of the things we, I think, um, and some of this was just COVID and Zoom and you can all do so much over Zoom. It's been sort of a reporting. We're telling them what's going on and hey, what's happening in your community. It's, it's very, um, high level and that. So we want to turn, with the last, at the last meeting, we said that we, we really want to turn that group into a more strategic conversation. And one of the things we want each community to come in and really explain, to your point, what it is they're trying to accomplish, what it is they're trying to be and, and get into some real depth in those meetings. So keep that in mind also. You, you have, the forum that, that all the communities had is, is really that, that regional economic development team, which is all the development directors, all the utilities, so Cox and Dominion and Virginia Natural Gas, all those folks are in the room. The, uh, reinvent Hampton Roads and the PDC, so sort of all the regional folks, you know, we've got them in a room once a month talking about what's going on. So it's, if you want to influence kind of the direction of things, that's a great place to, to get Chris to inject.
Now, um, another one is, um, and you know, this may not be in your wheelhouse, but I mentioned it when I was on mayors and chairs and, and now see the mayors have really taken it to heart as we discussed it in there, as far as the violence that's going across our communities. More in the lower portion than up here, but everybody has their, you know, growths and their issues and, and that sort of thing with violence. Is there anything that, have y'all sat on any of those meetings or is anything y'all can add to that to maybe say, because the more violence in an area, and I hear people talking about, you know, Virginia Beach is a beautiful place, is wonderful and all that, but I hear people worried about the violence is ticking up in Virginia Beach. So that's going to make people pull away from that region. And, you know, they start pulling away from there, they're going to pull away from here. You know, it's, it's, it's a domino effect. So, you know, it may be something to look at in the horizon as far as this pandemic of violence we're having. And, and it's, I think it goes back more to mental health than anything else.
So the, the way we're, we're sort of connected right now is really through Bob Crumb. So, so Bob, you know, is who the, the PDC is who convened, I think they had two meetings, one or two meetings. I think they just had their second meeting. And so, um, Bob and Sean Avery, a handful of us get together once a month and just, everybody talks about what's going on. So we kind of stay plugged in there. But, um, so now we haven't really gotten it plugged in as an organization, but it's an interesting, it's a really interesting conversation. I'll tell you, our mayors talk about it at the board meetings, sort of before and after the meeting. So it is a really critical issue. And so, you know, how, you know, affordable housing, you know, education, the, all those things touch economic development. We got mayors talking right now. There's a lot going on on recycling, right? How does all that, and, and that, that's a really important thing for companies that want to understand how you're treating the environment. Are you going to have renewable energy? So all this stuff, um, feeds into, um, what we're doing.
Thank you. I think.
Well, let me just, uh, say once again, I, well, I don't think anybody was advocating here for 757-948, uh, in both of our new, uh, areas.
No.
But.
Is that the zip code?
But it, it does seem to me that one of the things that, that we can do better, um, and that we can certainly, um, uh, work with you to accomplish is to identify some of the things that have been strengths for us. We have had some really successful, uh, economic development enterprises and we have some, uh, and what I would point to would be the, the kind of innovative organizations that are out there like Core Six Glass, uh, that is working on, you know, materials for SpaceX, uh, and Owens Illinois that found out that they weren't going to have, uh, Anheuser-Busch is so much of a client anymore and had to figure out a way to reinvent themselves as a, uh, an effective manufacturing plant. Um, so we've, you know, they're, they're maybe not the biggest operations and, and, uh, but they do bring some real value to the community, both in terms of providing outlets for, uh, for people who have creative ideas. And, uh, we have a little bit more land than some other areas still available. And we have, uh, the opportunity as a locality to benefit from machinery and tools taxes that, uh, may not, uh, mean, mean a lot of employees coming into an area, but rather resources coming in without, uh, as much of an impact on the cost of government. So I think we do have some real good opportunities and, and I'm confident, uh, that, uh, you'll have, um, uh, um, the chance to, uh, help us figure out the best way to, to grow along with Mr. Johnson and his team. And, uh, so I, again, thank you for, for, uh, coming to present today. I, I would say that one of the things that I, I think is coming through fairly consistently nowadays is that, um, not all of our boards are going to have representatives from every locality, but what we really need is to know that the, that the leadership, the, the administrative leadership, the administrative officers of the organization recognize that you're serving a broader community. And we've seen that with the workforce development, uh, piece. And I think we're seeing it with, uh, the TPO and the PDC. Um, and so, you know, we may have to recognize that, that, uh, maybe we don't get as many, uh, representatives at the table, although maybe adjusting the thing, does it, do all seven cities need to always have a representative? Uh, and when you take into account the percentage of the population that are living in the counties that are, you know, represented now just by one member, maybe there's some opportunity for, for adjustment there. But, uh, um, I think, uh, this is a great, uh, great start.
I should have said this. One of the things, Mary Bunting represents the city managers and county administrators on our board, uh, right now. Um, she and I are going to host a meeting of all of the, uh, her peers and a commensurate number of, uh, private investors this summer to sort of have this oversight conversation. Cause it, cause it is, if you don't have somebody on the board, you do feel a little bit, okay, that's fine. I get, I'll get information. But where do I get to plug in? And so the, I, we're thinking about, is that a twice a year dinner? Is it a quarterly conversation? And anyway, we'll kind of work through that. That gives Scott or, uh, one of you all an opportunity to, to plug in more directly. So we're wide open. I go back to this, this, I'm going to tell you, 90% of our problems, right, mine at home and, and it works, is communication, right? And if we, if we communicate well, um, I, I believe, I may have said this in my notes too, I think people that are informed and, um, aware of what we're doing are generally engaged and generally supportive if they, um, like where you're going. And so we're going to try really hard to keep y'all informed. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, so now we'll, uh, move on to, uh, our own economic development, uh, directory. Uh, Mr. Johnson is going to be talking about the, uh, fiscal year. Um, I'm sorry, the business investment, uh, grant program that was, uh, explained in our packet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Um, the proposal that's on your agenda today for consideration is a result of collaborative discussions that have occurred over multiple, um, multiple departments, economic development, community development, county administration principally. But certainly I know for fact, each and every one of you have had discussions with both existing and prospective businesses asking, and if I'll generalize and summarize, isn't there anything the county can do? Um, the cost of compliance with ordinances, codes, policies can be substantial, can be underestimated in many cases by businesses that are here and those that are looking to come here. And those questions, whether they're seeking legislative relief or they're seeking funding and some assistance. Um, the legislative side, obviously with ordinance amendments takes time. And when just coming through the adoption of a comp plan, there is no easy immediate legislative relief in terms of amending ordinances to be more favorable and less costly to businesses. And in many cases, that isn't what we're looking forward to do for in James City County anyway. Um, but the proposal that, that we had some internal discussions with, um, recently, that's before you for discussion today, timely because you're going to be considering adoption of the budget here in the next month or so, um, is one of proposing a business investment grant program to try to encourage private capital investment, um, in our existing commercial industrial properties that happen to be located along community character corridors identified in the conference plan. Uh, the assistance would come in the form of grants, which would incentivize redevelopment of those existing commercial industrial properties, which are either, either currently vacant, um, have non-conforming features such as signage or lighting, would benefit from the addition of landscaping, uh, facade renovations, decorative fencing, um, or in some cases additional safety features such as sidewalks or ADA compliance for building code and building standards. Uh, any improvements that we've discussed would need to be shown on in a, a site plan that would be reviewed and approved by James City County to make sure that any grants would be provided, that there would be, uh, that the monies would be actually go into the intended purpose. Um, and those grants could be administered through the EDA. Uh, the one thing that is missing in that proposal is a funding source, um, which is why we're coming for you today to initiate that discussion and hope over the course of the next month, if the board sees fit to want to adopt a program similar to this, we can put all the nuts and bolts together of the program particularly. But the funding source would have to be identified as part of the budget, um, for the next, uh, for the FY 2324 budget. If the board supervisors were to allocate approximately $100,000 in funding over the course of the two-year budget cycle, roughly $50,000 per year to encourage redevelopment and private investment opportunities, awards to a maximum of $10,000 per business, um, over the course of those two years would meet, provide a meaningful level, um, of assistance towards helping improve both the economic fatality of the vibrancy and the character of our commercial and industrial properties, uh, along these corridors. Um, I'm happy to answer any specific questions you have. Uh, both Paul Holt and Jason Purse, um, involved in the discussions that we had internally. And I'm sure we're all here available, uh, to you today as well. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, questions?
I, I don't have a question. I, I, uh, thank you. Um, I think this is vitally important. I'd like to see a little bit more money, um, put into it. So I hope it's something that as we go along, if this should get approval, that we continue to invest in. Um, you know, we often, the people, we need to make somebody go in, I talked about this the last, you know, go in here where it's empty. Sometimes it can be cost prohibitive, um, for someone to do that. And I've been working with a new business, um, in the Berkeley District who is do, multi-purposing a building that could, but, um, could have been, uh, we, we could have put, and, and I, this, I mean, no disrespect to towing companies, but, um, could have, could have done, gone in, been a towing company, um, with absolutely no changes. Um, is someone putting in a different type of business, one that's going to have, um, customers, uh, going to be quite busy. The amount of money that is going in to invest in this business because of what we require is quite substantial. And so it, but it's a benefit for us that, that we're going to have this in, um, this particular corridor. So, um, I'm just, I'm really appreciative that we've, that we're doing this, that we're recognizing the investment that businesses make into our community. And, um, I'm, I'm hoping that this will get approval and that, um, people will take advantage of it and get some feedback from, from them as well on, you know, 10,000 helped, but 20 would have been great. So, but thank you.
And the numbers that I put forward and I mentioned there, these are just first broad brush strokes of trying to figure out what's too much, what's too little, what's meaningful.
Understand.
What helps. Um, so in, in your discussions, if those numbers happen to change, we'll adjust with it.
So Chris, is this something where we could, uh, jump in initially at a certain amount and then as our budget changes or the needs change or we see the vitality of the program, that would change on a budgetary level year after year?
Certainly. I mean, right now you're adopting a two-year budget cycle. So we've put forward a proposal for discussion specifically to that budget. But certainly based on the success of that program, if it's determined that the amount of, uh, funding, if it were to be approved, is not meaningful enough in some cases, or would benefit from being broader to catch more and more companies, um, at a different level of support, if they're varying degrees, that's certainly something over time and different budgets the board discusses, that could be amended over time to be, uh, a better program and evolve.
Great starting point. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good starting point.
Well, I, I have, uh, confidence, Mr. Johnson, that you'll, you'll do a, a good job in putting this together. I, I do think it's going to be important for us as this program starts to develop to see, uh, and to think about a, a set of, uh, principles to, that would operate, uh, you know, is it, uh, we had a, we had a program like this a while ago that, where the focus was really on community character corridors. Uh, and, uh, you know, there we were saying basically, because we think these are important roadways, that, uh, the, uh, aesthetics of the, of a, a building will be, uh, quite important. Um, you know, if, if we're talking about, uh, the cost of county, um, expectations and requirements, that gets a little bit more dicey, I think. Uh, we have to have a kind of clear understanding of what's involved there and whether, whether the, the requests really relate directly to things that the county is requiring to take place as opposed to, uh, things that, uh, you know, maybe where there's a misunderstanding or, or, um, a need to, um, uh, just kind of explain more clearly what, what our requirements might be. Um, so just as, as we start to develop it, the idea of, of thinking about, uh, what criteria we will use in, in determining, um, whether, uh, there's a project that would, will, um, uh, meet the expectations, uh, of, of funding, uh, I think would be important. But I have confidence you'll do that.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we'll take whatever direction. I think Chris wanted to make sure the idea sort of resonated with you, at least from that. I think we have enough to move forward and talk about it. Our intent was one, to be competitive with those around us because there are local, localities around us providing some incentives to low, small businesses to reinvest. And then in talking with staff, we really don't have, have anything that helps somebody rehabilitate an existing site. And so it's much almost easier and less expensive to go build on a new site than to redevelop an existing site, particularly if you're changing the use. And I think we were focused on those community character corridors. That was our intent. And we were trying to focus on things that would benefit the corridor when you ride by. So all of us that pass that location visually, it would look better to us and not just be beneficial to the benefit. And I think most of those are requirements that locally we're asking them to do, whether it's landscaping or sidewalks or the facade improvements to try to make it visually better. So, but with the direction today, uh, well, Chris will work with his EDA group to bring something back of a program we might administer, make sure you're comfortable with that. In our budget discussion in a few minutes, I would probably advocate for a small amount, maybe the 50,000 to be incorporated in that if you have. So come July 1st, we could have a program presented to you and funding available as well.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
And, uh, now we move on to the fiscal year 202324 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. To get us started on our budget discussion this afternoon, I'll provide a very brief summary of the information that I've shared to date on the budget thus far. The county does have, again, a two-year budget. Uh, the first year is the only year in which the spending is appropriated. Funding is allocated based on the county's strategic goals and initiatives, as well as mandates that are bestowed upon us by the state and federal governments. In terms of the total, total county budget, all funds inclusive, the 23 proposed budget is 233.4 million. That's about 8.9 million or 4% greater than our current year budget. The focus was primarily on three areas, exceptional service, staff recruitment retention, as well as our community appearance and various capital needs. On the personnel side of the operating budget, uh, we focused on raising our minimum wage to be more competitive, uh, to 1336 an hour. We did that in a two-phased approach, first from 964 to $12 and then from 12 to 1336. It also includes a continuation of the funding for a raise, which was just here recently implemented in April of 2022. It includes the funding of eight new full-time positions across all the funds, four conversions of part-time to full-time positions and a number of reclassifications as well as career ladders. On the capital side, uh, we have restored our pay-as-you-go funding to our CIP program. This was really restoring funding, uh, back to our pre-pandemic levels and also to get back into alignment with our own fiscal policy, which requires that 5% of our annual revenues be devoted to pay-as-you-go, uh, funding, which is a strategy in order to reduce our overall debt burden on the county. And then also on the facilities and space needs side of the CIP, we have $85 million that is devoted to various county buildings, um, new buildings, as well as some expansions or renovations to existing buildings. Focus now on the operating fund only, or the general fund. The proposed budget currently is at 200.218.2 million dollars. That's 16 million or a little less than an 8% increase over the current year budget. It is a reassessment year in fiscal year 2023. That reassessment resulted in an overall increase of 8.2%. That was on the residential as well as the commercial side. It does not propose any change in the real estate tax rate itself. Over on the personal property side of the house, it does provide tax relief by applying an assessment ratio of 75% instead of 100% of the total NADA values. So inherently a 25% reduction, which saves our citizens about $9 million. The only fee change is in our medic recovery program, also known as our ambulance service fees. And this was just to align our rates with the Medicare, Medicaid reimbursement rates. Um, and again, this was, um, postponed during the pandemic. So it's been a number of years since we've realigned our rates. For the general fund only of those eight positions I mentioned earlier, earlier, six of them are in our general fund. All of the conversions from part-time to full-time are in our general fund. And then again, just various reclassifications and career ladders. Um, and once again, our estimated cost to provide the same level of services exceeded our revenue projection. Uh, we had about $3.4 million of additional requests, primarily in personnel, that we were not able to fund with the proposed amounts. Just to recap on the operational revenues, uh, the majority of our funding is again derived from our general property taxes. So mainly real estate and personal property. from our general property taxes, so mainly real estate and personal property. That comprises about 70% of our total annual revenues. And our other local taxes, that includes our sales, meals, and lodging taxes, that comprises about 15% of our total revenues. And again, this was the area that was hardest hit during the pandemic. And as you can see, we're really trying to get back to where we were pre-pandemic levels. The remaining 15% of our revenue comes from all the other areas, primarily fees, charges for services, various licenses, and then just miscellaneous revenues. It also includes about $9.8 million that we receive in, from the state in the form of our personal property tax relief, also known as the car tax. And it includes the reimbursements that we receive from the state for our constitutional officers. In terms of our spending, 47% is paid to our school division to support their operations. We also pay the debt service on their behalf for capital projects. 15% of our budget goes to support our fire department, our police department, our emergency operations, also known as our dispatch center, as well as our emergency management. 16% of our budget goes to outside agencies. That includes the Williamsburg Regional Library, and it also provides all the nonprofits that we fund that provide services to our residents. That amount also includes everything that we apply for the county's capital program, and including our own debt service and programs that are accounted for in other funds, such as our housing and social service programs. So the remainder of our budget, which is about 22%, goes to all of our other functions. That includes county administration, finance, IT, our courts, community development programs, general services, and also all of our programs in parks and recreation. Just to summarize a few key dates, first, I wanted to start with the real estate reassessment. Two key dates that we have coming up, April 30th is the deadline for our citizens to file an appeal with the Board of Equalization. And then the last half, the second two weeks of June of this year, our Board of Equalization will conduct the hearings to hear any appeals on the reassessment. May 10th, the Board of Supervisors is scheduled to adopt the budget at 5:00 PM. The location of that meeting will be here in the city center at this very building. And I did, again, I wanted to mention, anyone interested in contacting Real Estate, just wanted to mention their phone number, again, is 253-6650. And that information is available on the county's website as well.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I think that's the end of our presentation. I did provide three handouts that I just wanted to review briefly, and then we're open to whatever questions or comments you would want from us. And the first was, the chairman had asked just what was going on within the region or around us. So this one smaller sheet was just intended to show you the reassessments that occurred, the current tax rates, and the proposed tax change. And most around us are recommending some type of tax rate decrease, and then most have done something similar to what you did to provide the personal property, particularly vehicles, some relief there for the bills that go out in May. The bottom half of that is what do we do under our current property tax exemption that's available to seniors? Those, generally, the qualifications are over 65 or totally permanently disabled, with an income less than $45,000 a year and assets less than $200,000 that doesn't include their primary residence. And we would forgive the first $120,000 in value of their primary residence, which equates to just a little over $1,000 per year in property tax that our residents, if qualified, would receive. They do have to requalify annually. And over the past five years, we've averaged around 500 properties, with our total exemption over the last five years annually being about $474,000 per year. The only change to this, New Kent, I said the 13 cent decrease, that was their revenue neutral. They are proposing an 11 cent decrease. And then they did do a 25% decrease in the assessed value of personal property, as did we. But I think the rest of the information is accurate there. The second handout was really just to highlight, and we've done this in the budget document as well, but I just wanted to make sure we had put in front of you the 3.4 million that was not funded. This just shows you where those positions or where those expenses were, were within our budget. So it's really just informational, again, on a scale that maybe you can read it, because I know when I get it printed small enough, sometimes it's hard to see. And I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. And I want our departments to know that I absolutely appreciate their patience with us and understanding. They, I believe they ask for what they believe they need to meet the community's requests from us, but they also work within the budget that's provided and still continue to meet that need very well. So I do want to recognize and thank you for your efforts in that. And then the third handout is budget reduction considerations for a 1 cent tax rate reduction. I at least had some direction from you on areas that we might consider. And I've sent a couple of emails, but this compiles those emails into one sheet. So this shouldn't be anything new, except I did give a priority of the reductions, just so you'd know. In the yellow line in the middle, if you asked me where I would go for these business reductions, it would be those items above the yellow line. But happy to take any direction or discuss with you if you feel in a different place to go.
Would you mind reiterating just one more time for everyone what we did with the property tax?
We are recommending reducing it. At this point, it's my proposed budget, it remained at 84 cents.
No, I'm talking about with the personal.
Oh, the personal, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Again, we reduced the values to 25%, to 75% of their assessed value. So you gave a 25% reduction in personal property. It totaled about $9 million for us. So it was significant to us. And then Chairman McGlynn had mentioned in getting down to a per, I guess, vehicle or per family or person, it was in that $130 per vehicle kind of cost savings to our residents. So it's significant, and they'll see that in June. So that's a bill that comes immediately payable, goes out in May, it's due in June. And so I think that is significant tax relief you have already provided in that capacity.
If I could jump in right here with that in mind, and while protecting our employees and their increased wages, I think that's very important. I think we all recognize that. I'd like to make the motion that we reduce our tax rate from 84 cents to 83 cents and ask Mr. Stevens to bring a budget reflecting his recommendations of the least impact for us to achieve this.
Okay, a motion. Do we have some discussion before we move on to vote on that? Anybody want to have any comments?
If I could ask one question, and it sort of dovetails into our previous presentation, about where you would come up with that money for the potential grant program, would that be something separate, or would that be something you would have to work into this particular?
You know, where I would recommend that, above the yellow line, I show $100,000 on capital building maintenance miscellaneous. That was, as I totaled the items above that, they totaled more than the $1.1 million that I need for the 1 cent reduction. I really put that in there as a placeholder for these items that we, they're functioning now, they're just at the end of their life cycle. And I was trying to have some money in there that if a heat pump were to go down today, we have money to fix it. Again, we may not spend that $100,000. I was just having that as a placeholder in the budget. So for me, I would likely look to that number and reduce that number some amount and pull some of that $50,000 from there.
So we could cover that in that spot?
Yes, ma'am. If the board's so inclined, that's where I was leaning towards in terms of being able to provide those business grants.
Thank you.
And if I can, while we're on that business grant part of it, because I wanted to make my comments or ask my questions, it's associated with the budget itself. If you start out the first year with $50,000, and the maximum grant, I guess, is 10,000, so you would, if you had five, 10,000, that's your, that's, you could help five businesses in one year. If it's smaller amounts, you could obviously help more. Is that figure sort of based upon what you expect that properties like this are likely to come? I mean, I, how did that, how did you arrive at that, at that figure or that number?
I think there's some, and Chris could add, Chris had a meeting, I think, to run. I think there is some, some logic to that. We think that's a likely number, but certainly that actual number will vary. In practice, if we had six or seven businesses come forward, then it might be that two of them roll into the next year, or that we'd come back to the board to discuss the projects. I don't, I don't think we would have enough that it would be so much every year that we would exceed that, because there would be an average type of renovation. And I don't think our money in terms of 10,000 or even 20 will tip the scales 100%. It is still very expensive when you talk to these small businesses that are renovating an existing site, particularly one that is changing use along a community character corridor. They're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to get there. So they were going to make some investment. Ours is really trying to help address some of those visual things and to have at least some goodwill, since other localities are doing something similar and benefit from that. Because we're asked often, why don't we do anything?
Okay, well, given that, I'm comfortable with the funding that you're discussing on it being part of the, part of the budget process.
Now, the question on New Kent, the 11 cent decrease, was that due to the racing, starting back and gambling and?
Well, one of the things you can note is that their assessment shows a 24% increase.
Right.
And that obviously is pretty significant.
That's a significant increase.
They are also expecting.
Their average increase is 24%?
Yes.
And ours, our average was what?
Eight.
Eight. 8.2.
And I would add, I think if you look, most of the localities around us, while they're reducing the tax rate, their money or their additional tax increase is significantly greater than ours at 8%.
Exactly. And that, that's what I wanted to bring forward. You know, because somebody may hear this and go, well, they're giving 11 cent, we're giving 1 cent. What, what would it, you know, and they won't understand that they went up 24%, we went up 8.2. So there's a big difference on average on, you know, that's a lot of revenue they're bringing in on that reassessment that we're not bringing in. And I know, probably out of all of them, York County is probably about our closest, and they're giving one, one and a half pennies.
They are, but they're not providing any reduction in the assessed value of the personal property.
Exactly. So that's 9 million that they're, well, if they were compared exactly to us, that'd be 9 million. They're keeping in their coffers. They're not giving back, that we're giving back to our citizens. So I just, I just want to make sure the citizens understand that, that, you know, that this is, that 1 cent's going to be brought about 1.2 million?
Just over 1.1, yes, sir.
1.1. So then we're just over $10 million that we're going to give back as relief to the citizens. And so, you know, that's a significant number. I mean, you know, you could sit up here, if this passes, I'm just saying, you know, you could sit up here and say, well, we've got a lot of projects that we need to do. There's a lot of things we can do in pay-go. There's a lot of things we can move forward and ahead to give the citizens what they need. But also, they have to understand, too, I think out of all the communities, James City County, and I'm proud of this, as everyone knows, James City County does more and has more and offers more than any other communities, I believe. And that's my 2 cents. So the money that, that is being spent is being spent wisely. And able to give some back is always a great thing for the citizens. But you also got to remember all the good things that we have here and all the things that we're protecting, watching out for, parks and wrecks. You know, we've, within the last eight so years, spent 3.7 million and got 100 million in transportation alone. I mean, that's a heck of a savings for the citizens. So there's a lot the board's doing in, in order to move this forward. And I would, I would support the, the 1 cent to 83 cent decrease as well. Thank you.
I would just mention one thing, and that is that the contribution that York County makes to their public schools was probably about 56, 57 million this year, as compared to what we contribute to our school system, which also makes, we're almost double that. So that's huge, because of the, the federal money that they receive and state money that they receive. You mentioned that, that we get a reimbursement from the state regarding our constitutional officers. Are we reimbursed 100% at that?
No, we are not. The, depending on the office, it varies by office. So for example, in the treasurer and commissioner revenue, we receive about a 50% reimbursement on the positions that are supported by the state. And we're reimbursed at the state's salary amount. So the reason I make that distinction is there are several positions in our constitutional officers that the state does not support, and those are 100% locally funded. In addition, those employee salaries are above the state level. So any amount above the state level, we're paying 100% of as well. It's very similar to the school analogy with the SOQ positions.
And what about the sheriff's office?
Same scenario with the sheriff's office. That is one that we receive 100% reimbursement on the positions that are state-funded, and again, at that state salary amount. We provide some positions 100% locally funded, and those deputies make more than what the state's salary is as well.
Thank you. I would, what I would like, if possible, moving forward, if we think at our next meeting, how long we're going to be able to, to keep our tax rate at this number? Are we looking at next year? Well, I guess it would be, well, I guess we could raise it next year. Are we looking at, or what the consequence would be if we didn't next year, if we kept it here or in two years from now, so that we have, I don't, you know, it's, we cut it a penny now, but at some point, are we, do we see ourselves having to raise it back up?
Maybe to tag on to that, if I could, the assessments that come out in two years, if y'all have any kind of a feel where that might play into that in two years?
Yes, and I think that's the biggest speculative comment right now, is what does happen a year or two years from now. Several of these jurisdictions that are having double-digit increases assess every year. So, and they still have higher percentages than we do. We reassess every two years. And so there is a lot of speculation that this unrealized gain will be much smaller in the next reassessment period. And so that would impact how much revenue that we're generating in real estate taxes. We're also looking to see what happens with personal property tax values. We are providing some relief with this budget, but there's also speculation those values will go back down. Meanwhile, costs continue to increase. And so as people are paying their employees more, the cost to our vendors is going up. We're in a very high inflationary market. Interest rates are going up. And a lot of the decisions that are made on CIP, both for ourselves and the school division, will have an impact going forward. So if we open the general services building, if we get the new preschool space, all of those things are going to drive cost. We do provide a five-year summary in our budget for, for what we know today, but those decisions will impact those numbers. And we don't know today what will happen in the housing market, and that's a big factor.
Right.
As far as I would add, you know, I think looking at these assessed values across the peninsula primarily, I would still say ours are well below what the reality is today. I know I've heard numerous examples, Mr. Hippel shared his, I've heard it from staff, I've heard it from residents, that many say they bought their house for this amount five or six years ago, and our reassessment still hadn't got there. And I know from personal experience, looking a year ago, we're not caught up. So I don't think our values are inflated. So if there's a housing market correction, I do think we're pretty stable in that our values, I still believe are undervalued in terms of our assessments. Most of the residents I've heard from haven't really, it hadn't been the value increase, it's been the tax increase. It's been having to pay more because their value's up. It's not that their house, that they didn't believe that was a fair value. And so when I talked with our real estate staff today, we have three people who have appealed their decision to our Board of Equalization. So that would tell me that by and large, while everybody might not be happy with their value, because it might mean they pay more tax, most of them are not, have not taken it to the level of a formal appeal with our Board of Equalization. So I still think our values are below where they should be. Ms. Day and I have had a lot of conversation about that, and I think in the next two years, we're going to try to work to help our staff have a little better data, because I think it's a resource of data and some information to help the process get us closer to that market level. So my hope is in the two-year period, to your point, if housing stabilizes, it doesn't have to keep going up, if it'll just stabilize where it is and not have a sharp correction, that you may generate enough revenue to continue us forward in the next two-year reassessment. But we won't know that until we see how the world does and the economy turns. But today, I believe our values are still at a spot that is reasonably safe in terms of if there's a correction, because our values didn't, my opinion, haven't gotten to where they should be.
Thank you.
Anything else? So I did, as Mr. Stevens indicated, do a quick calculation on what our action related to the personal property tax meant for a kind of typical case perhaps. And if you think about an automobile that in today's Kelley Blue Book would be valued at $20,000, if we had stayed with our normal personal property tax valuation at 100% at the 4% rate, and included the state's share, which of course declines every year as the total value of our automobiles increases, the number stays flat, about $9 million, I think, Ms. Day, is that right? That the bill, if we had taken no action, would have been $520 on that, on that automobile. Because of our action, we're only valuing $15,000 of it, and that means our, our cost to the taxpayer is $390. So a $130 reduction in, in the amount of personal property tax. You know, the 1% decline in, in the tax rate equates to $30 for the year, right? So about 2 and, 2 and 3/4 cents per month. And, you know, I understand the symbolic nature of it, so that's fine. The only caveat I would have on, on that, in addition to what, what The only caveat I would have on, on that, uh, in addition to what, what, uh, Ms. Larson is, is raising, is simply that we don't know what the state's going to do. We know that it's, it's going to provide tax relief. We don't know how much, and we don't know what the implications of that will be for us, because, um, it's quite likely that if the state goes to one end of the tax reduction scale, it will reduce the amount of revenue that our schools and our local government receive from the state, um, or, uh, or if they go in another direction, it may not have that impact. So there is always the question of, of what we may, uh, be, uh, facing. Hopefully by May twelfth, we'll have a budget, but we don't know that that's going to be the case, uh, there. But certainly, um, I, I'm, uh, hopeful that, that we'll, uh, get the General Assembly to, um, agree on a, uh, sort of middling point that they can all support, and, uh, we can, we can move on without too much negative consequences. As I say, um, I don't have it, uh, that much, uh, heartache over the, uh, uh, nature of the, um, uh, property tax rate being reduced by a penny this year, um, with the caveat that I, you know, I reserve the right to, to change my mind if things really goes, go south, uh, with the conclusion of the state budget. So, um, with that, are we ready to, to go ahead and vote, or any, uh, more specific questions anybody has on, on the budget this year? Oh, we're not, I'm sorry, we're not voting today.
Well, I made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we have that motion on the table. So, uh, the motion, uh, uh, Mr. Stevens, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Well, with that, uh, I think we are now.
I, can I, may I ask Ms. Day two follow-up questions? Sure. Um, one being, should we have waited on, to act on the personal property, um, until we had a little bit better, because we acted on that very early before we really started getting feedback, et cetera. Should we have waited on that?
That may be a question more appropriate for Mr. Stevens. I can say from a financial standpoint, my conversations with the commissioner of revenue, he asked for it at the time that he did, because he was trying to have it be effective in that June billing, um, and he had enough information at that time, preliminary information from NADA, that he felt comfortable with where those assessments were going to come in.
Okay, and then the second question would be, what if the, the state budget, you know, if we, we do not get that one, we don't hold localities harmless in the grocery tax and that kind of thing, what are we going to do then?
Yes, the, the impact on us, um, at this point, direct impact, not including the school division impact, would be a revenue loss of about two million dollars, um, and that is a state estimate, um, but it seems reasonable based on information I've been provided from our commission of revenue office. Um, and so that would be a loss of revenue that we would have to, through these budget reductions, revisit and see if we wanted to take some reductions there or go a different direction altogether. That would be ongoing, so that would have, unless there were another action by the General Assembly, that would have a long-term impact on the budget. Uh, the speculation is that we would be held harmless the first year, um, the additional speculation is what happens after that. Um, will it be another personal property tax relief where it's a fixed dollar amount, and that dollar amount doesn't change with time and with inflation, and so it means less over time? Um, the other unknown is school division, you know, what's the impact on them, and then if it's a loss in funding to the school division, would they be coming to the localities to make up that difference?
Thank you.
Uh, so now we have, we are, the board requests and directives.
Ms. Chairman, um, I would like to, um, ask, um, that we have our planning department, I talked to Mr. Holt about this earlier, and it was a carryover from the last meeting, um, for the land use, um, portion of the comprehensive plan dealing with eastern state terminology, where the one part is called, uh, eastern state Newtown, to have, uh, basically have the staff directed to, um, correct or change that language, just to refer to it as eastern state parcel C, uh, without necessarily any, uh, uh, direct connection to, uh, Newtown, which would be then, uh, something we would look at, depending on what was brought forward by any developer. So it's strictly a, a language change to try to allay some of the fears of some of the folks, of my constituents in Newtown, and, uh, with, with your concurrence, I would appreciate the opportunity to have him bring that back to us.
In a future, future meeting with more?
Yes.
And Mr. Chair, I think I can direct that, and we can make sure that happens. You could vote or not vote, but we can definitely make sure that happened with that direction.
Any objection to that?
I'd like to hear more about it.
Okay, great. Uh, Mr. Hippel?
Um, yeah, there was, um, and I didn't get one of the letters from the, um, firefighters, uh, the union, um, but we did get a letter from the, um, firefighter's union on what we weren't doing in James City County. It seemed to, when I got a copy of the letter, it seemed to me that it was a lot on what we weren't doing and what we weren't fulfilling our duties. Well, I think that's been straightened, am I right? Mr. Stevens?
Maybe in your mind.
Is that, I know, I mean, I mean, but the individual who sent the letter, I think now knows that there were some mistakes made in the letter. I would love to see a response, and I'm probably going to give him a personal call, but I'd love to see a response from him back to our chief, and, um, basically saying, I didn't realize this was going on, I didn't realize the things we were doing. I mean, I know he realized that we just hired nine new firefighters, because one of the firefighters, or one of the stations he works for, those firefighters went there the first day, three of them, in fact. So, um, in, in the letter, in the letter, I want the citizen to know, in the letter it talks about donations, and if there is a donation, you're donating to the union. If you want to donate to the union, that's fine. I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying don't donate to the union, but don't think those donations that you're putting in are going to the firefighters out there in the field firefighting. And, and they're uprend of the county, we have a great volunteer fire department, and they send a letter out asking for donations. I'm worried that this letter that was sent out, and I'm sorry I didn't get one, because we don't live across street practically from each other.
Would you like to borrow mine?
Yeah, and, um, but that, the volunteers may now, people may read that thinking they're donating to the volunteers, and they're not donating to the volunteers. And the volunteers, as, as you know, being in there since eighty-four, you know, they put a lot of time and a lot of effort and everything else into the community, and those dollars that come in, and some people will give us ten dollars, because that's all they can afford, and they can't afford to give another ten dollars to somewhere else. So if you're going to redefine print and check it off very carefully, if you think you're giving to the volunteer fire department, because you may think, by looking at it, because you've always got letters from the volunteer fire department, that you're sending to the volunteer fire department, just, and I'm, if you want to send it to the union, I have no problem with that either, that's, that's fine to do that. I just want to let you know that that makes short the volunteer fire department, and I don't want the volunteer fire department to be affected by any of that.
Do you know when their letter is going out? The volunteer letter?
I don't know.
It's soon, isn't it?
It should be.
So when they get fund, when they ask for donations, it directly goes to help the volunteer fire department?
Goes right to the volunteer fire department.
Whereas the, the other letter from the union goes to the, to the union coffers?
I think that stays within the union. It may, may be used, and I don't know, for other union firefighters and supplies or something like that, I don't know. I can't, you know, tell you. And, um, but I know that the volunteers all go into the volunteer fire department and are all used to buy supplies and, and equipment and everything else that they need to do their job as volunteers. So I just don't want to see the, our volunteer fire department, that's been around since nineteen forty-eight, be shorted on, you know, the amount of funds that they should, you know, normally would be getting. Um, let's see, let's see, what else was it? That's all for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, before I even get started. Thank you, you're so welcome. Uh, what, just a couple things. Uh, one, uh, Mr. Stevens, Chair McGlinnan, and I all attended the Greater Williamsburg Chamber of Commerce, uh, post-legislative forum, uh, last week, where our entire delegation came, and it was very informative, and, um, there was a, I think that you had to pre-ask your questions, but, um, of course, not everything is done in Richmond, as we've talked about, um, before, yeah, ever, um, but they, they are going back, I believe tomorrow, to, um, start wrapping up, hopefully, and so that was, um, that was very good. I also attended the EXP Realty grand opening, um, on Friday night, and, um, and we, um, Mr. Stevens and I went to the restore business after hours last week as well. Um, I do just want to take, just, uh, oh, and, um, Mr. McGlinnan and I did a tour of Jamestown, that, um, island, which was...
Jamestown rediscovery, yes.
Yes, Jamestown rediscovery, that was very informative, and I, I told John, I must have said fascinating probably three hundred times, but it was so fascinating, and, um, the, the discoveries that they've made out there are incredible, and, but I will tell you that, and I'm sure we will hear more about this to come, um, but they, they are in some threat over, over climate change and, um, possible flooding, um, that could happen to the first English settlement, and so, um, I, I know that they're working, Mr. Stevens has tried to, to work with them and, and tried to encourage to get the federal government involved, and so we may have to be, um, getting more actively involved with that as time goes on, but I want to thank them for that. That was, um, and then I just want to thank all of you all for, um, your support, as I had to miss the last meeting, um, doing my daughter duty, so, thank you.
Do that well.
Question, question on that, did Dominion put money, didn't, didn't, wasn't that part of an agreement we did in far as protecting the, some of the coast out there for them in Jamestown? Dominion's putting some money into that? Did that ever go through, or what?
Well, I don't know the answer to that, and we can try to find that out, but I, I can tell you it's going to take a whole lot of money.
Oh, yeah, that's a lot. I know they had, I, I know when we were negotiating back and forth, that was one of the things that there was a X amount going to that, I believe.
Well, I think, I think there is money that was going to, uh, promote tourism sites, um, but I'm...
Oh, yeah.
I'm, I'm not sure that, uh, there was anything going to, uh, trees in particular.
I thought it was shoreline protection they were doing? We'll have to check into that.
Mr. Stevens maybe could.
I'd like to know that.
I'm going to open my cookie now, but I've, I've displayed it.
You're right ahead.
Yeah, miss that, bring it up to the chair.
Thank you. Um, well, we didn't have a jail board meeting or an AFD meeting, but, um, we did have an EDA meeting, and, uh, the board, this board approved a community development block grant back in March for seven hundred thousand dollars, and, um, Mr. Johnson and, and others talked about that, that, uh, I just wanted to provide a, as he calls it, a news flash, that the grant program went live last Friday afternoon, and funding requests for over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars have been received as of yesterday evening. Um, so the Grant Review Committee is, I think they were meeting, is that today that they were meeting? That's what he's doing right now, and, um, EDA Vice Chair Lynn Meredith, um, is, is assisting with the JCC Financial and Management Services, along with others in the Commissioner of Revenue and Treasure, so there are multiple people there doing that, but we've already received, um, quite a few, uh, grant requests, so, funding requests, so that's, um, that's a positive step. But that's it, I have for you.
Great. Um, I'll just mention that, uh, on, um, Saturday, I attended, uh, a, an Earth Day, Arbor Day tree planting ceremony at Freedom Park, uh, the, um, combined efforts of the master gardeners of James City County, uh, the tree stewards, and James City County's Clean County Commission, uh, resulted in the planting of two American chestnut trees, one in the Williamsburg Botanical Gardens and one, uh, in the area of the Freed Black Settlement, and, uh, it was a, a very nicely presented, well-attended event, uh, and, uh, appreciated the opportunity to be there for that, uh, particular ceremony. Um, we are, uh, also, also just, uh, mentioned, uh, that we are slated to have a closed session this evening, but, uh, I've individually consulted with the members of the board, and I think we can take action on the appointment of a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Uh, um, we have four members, uh, whose terms have expired and whose, uh, reappointment has been recommended. Um, I have their names, if anybody would like to make the motion, or, I don't know, if anybody else is ready to do that? If not, let me go ahead and...
Motion to approve that list.
Okay, and the list would, would include, uh, Ivan Tab, Linda Knight, Scott Van Voorhees, and Larry Walk Senior, uh, to terms that will expire on April twelfth, twenty twenty-six. So we have a motion. Mr. Stevens, you call the roll, please.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So we turn to the reports of the county administrator.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two things, I do want to, uh, add on to what Ms. Sadler had shared on the Small Business Relief Program. It's for businesses, again, small business, locally owned, twenty or fewer full-time equivalent employees at any time over the last three years, and they have to have been in business for the past three years. A lot of information on the James City County website, or they could call seven-five-seven-two-five-three-six-six-zero-seven, again, two-five-three-six-six-zero-seven, but our hope is that we will have all of that money allocated in helping support our small businesses here. So I do want to commend our, our staff in seeking those funds and getting that grant program out there. Uh, the second item I'd like to share, our county attorney, while normally in a pretty good mood, uh, seemed to be especially, uh, more jovial the past week or so, and so I thought I'd let him introduce the reason for that, and we'll, we'll go from there. So, Mr. Kinsman?
You gave me Mr. Stevens?
I think I gave it to you.
You're jovial.
Happens sometimes. Yeah, it's not often that we have a, a new employee in our office, and in our audience today is Josh Everard. He's our new Assistant County Attorney that started last Monday. Uh, he still had a very good week, he worked with us for, uh, three days, and then we went into a conference, told him not all of them are like that. WNL Law School, ODU undergrad, uh, started his law career, sort of like me, working for a law firm that, um, specializes in local government law. So, uh, Litten and Sipe out in Harrisonburg, most recently with the city of Hampton, and so he's found, uh, much greener pastures over here. Uh, he's got great experience in local government, so we're really happy to have him, and, um, uh, I think Liz and I are both looking forward to distributing the work three ways instead of two, so, I just wanted to introduce some...
Welcome.
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 Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
All right. Any, anything else anybody has? If not, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to adjourned until five PM on May tenth, twenty twenty-two for the regular meeting.
Motion?
Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Motion carries.